It's now eight o'clock. Good morning and welcome to this September 22 budget discussion for 2021. We'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States, and the United Republic, which is one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to deviate from the agenda and start with you DJ if that's all right.
When I was last before you all, I had requested we had a conversation about an additional deputy prosecutor position for my office. I realized I did a pretty good job of explaining what I wanted, but not particularly a good job of explaining why I think it's absolutely necessary and why I need this. So I wanted to come back today and add to my commentary and see if I could make clear the difficulty that the law enforcement community and mine estimations confront. To that end, I brought some artwork. So there's something different. What I'm passing out are an overview of criminal case filings in Whitlish County from 2014 up into 2019. I want to start by saying I think 2020 is going to eclipse what has gone on through 2019. I consider this to be a public safety issue because we are running into a place where the reputation that we've earned over the years for being a place where drug dealers tread and criminals give us life birth as the potential to be coming to an end. And I certainly don't want that to happen all by myself. But that being said, we are up against it as a staff. We are up against it. What do I mean by that? When I started in 2001, Judge Mike Rush in the Whitley Superior Court as Chief Deputy Prosecutor, we would conduct criminal hearings on Monday mornings. And that was it. And Judge Rush and I would get through eight or 10 hearings in that timeframe from 8:00 AM to noon. And then we were done for the week. And then it was on to the rest of your job and all the other. Today, by contrast, Judge Paul has moved criminal court proceedings to three days a week to accommodate the uptick number of cases. Yesterday alone, we had 31 initial hearings for new criminal matters. So we are, and it's not just violent, it's handling, it's giving these cases the attention they deserve. Because in a lot of these cases, there are victims. And we've seen a sharp uptick in the kinds of services and the amount of services we're required to provide to crime victims. Thank God for Denny Spencer. So I want to go inside those numbers. If I can hedge a bit, I'd like to look at that first page. As you can see, from 2014 to 2016, we filed 1,956 criminal cases in both our circuit and superior courts. Twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, we filed 3,380 cases in both courts. That's approximately a 15% uptick. Why is that? Well, it's a lot of factors. It's not, I think the answer is probably yes. We've seen a huge transient population move through the US 30 and our state highway system. It used to be that a law enforcement officer tell me, he said, it used to be on burglary on Friday night. By Sunday morning, you could round up usual suspects and be done with it. It's not like that anymore. People are traveling mobile. And we have a huge influx of folks that just stop here, commit a crime, and then move on. That's changed in the way that crimes has spread off across the country. I also want to say this too. One of the great things about being prosecutors is to talk to my colleagues in other counties. And this is not unique to it. This is an issue that is confronting Huntington County, it's confronting Adams County, it's confronting Wells County, it's confronting all of us. So we have to deal with it. And the way that I am proposing to deal with it is by adding a deputy to handle this uptick in criminal matters. And just to give you another illustration, the preliminary review where we just finished a lengthy jury trial. Five days took me off the field for five days. I couldn't do anything else but that. And so when that happens, that puts everything else back. When I can't be around with my team to kind of lead the effort, I'm out of the loop. Not as part of it, I'm aware of it. But these are some of the pressures that we're facing. I only have one other lawyer that handles criminal matters. For 3,500 cases, that's impossible to be effective, impossible to be effective for the community. Impossible to be there for all our victims and it's a bad situation in my view. Having, as you know, as I've explained, Jennifer Patrick in my office, who's my Superior Court Administrator, just about finished high school, and she's a certified legal attorney. And it's helped tremendously. Without that, had she not chosen that course, had she chosen to do that, we would have been swamped. So some of the victim crimes that I talked about, some of the burglaries, some of the thefts, some of the violent crime probably couldn't have been prosecuted in time of passion without her. Although she can do everything that a lawyer can do, she can do almost everything. She's been doing it and doing it at a high level. In fact, it would be my intention to hire her into my office when she passes part. Her performance, word to the judges of this county, the defense bar in this county, defense bar from around state of Indiana is that she is an exceptional, will be an exceptional. And that's what, that's what I'm really here about. What else? What we've seen from 2017 to 2019, 12,873 infractions, speeding tickets, all of that stuff. Again, each of those is an individual case. So add another 13,000 cases, our bad check program, where we return money to the community for businesses who have been ripped off by people writing bad checks. Those case files are up. And that's really a point of pride with me because that's the one part in my office where I don't, I can actually talk to somebody and help them instead of going to a courtroom and screaming at them. I can help them. So we take a lot of pride in that program. What have we done to kind of mitigate this problem? Well, we've become more efficient. Brought Jen in as a CLO. We've tried to work with our courts very successfully, I think, to streamline process by which we administer these cases. Judge Fall and Judge Renshaw have been terrific to work with, their staffs have been terrific to work with. But it's still a swamp. I mean, we're still swamped. It's a volume problem. Again, my fear is that these cases don't get the attention that they're going to deserve. And if it was, you know, my daughter, or my wife, or my father, or my mother, they were the victim of a crime, I would want attention paid to their case. And I fear that we're coming to a point where we can't give that. I do have another lawyer, Lindsey Gross, and that was my juvenile and forfeiture and child support deputy. She is completely consumed with those three areas. So I don't have another lawyer to pull to assist us in the criminal world. Now, she can and does cover hearings for us. She does a good job for us in that regard. Again, the amount of time that's required. My chief deputy Corey Spring is in court four days a week. Another thing that we're quite proud of is our participation in the Veterans Port Program with Judge Fall. But that is intensely time consuming. You're taking an entire afternoon to handle two or three cases at minimum, and that's what Corey does. It's a terrific program. But again, it's a new program that we had never accounted for previously. And the time commitment to that program is significant. And I've discussed this with Judge Fall at length. And I think it was Councilman Barrett who asked me last time if I was supportive of the magistrate position. I am, because I know that the Superior Court is facing the exact same numbers that I'm facing. And I know that Judge Fall could use that position as well. On the same token, I asked him if he would be supportive of this request for additional funding for a deputy prosecutor. And he is. I don't speak for Judge Renshaw because I haven't had a specific conversation with him about it in a while. But Judge Fall and I discussed it at length last week. We all understand in the system that the system can't continue to operate at this level with this amount of staff. Now, that being said, I certainly understand where we stand in the wider world. This is the time of pandemic. Adding staff in the pandemic seems to me, just on its face, difficult. I think ultimately the expense, though, in terms of what we would cost the community and public safety and our ability to be responsive. And thank God we haven't had murder or homicide or something along those lines where all of our resources are devoted to that. And the rest of it all goes to the wayside. So thankfully, that hasn't happened. But if I described to you in the past that we're treading water right here, and we're treading water, the water's right here, we're now treading water, and the water's right here. Who were weekends, my staff, Jenny Falk, probably ought to be running NASA or something along those lines. Because the amount of work goes into just getting us through a Monday morning around there. So if it sounds like I'm whining, I am a little bit. But I'm proud of my folks, and I'm proud of what we do. And I think the only way that we can continue to do it at the level that we've all become accustomed to is if I can add this staff person. And I don't want to make a dire prediction, and I'm not an alarmist, and I'm not shouting at the moon. But this is serious, and I want it to be absolutely clear with all of you how serious it is. And those numbers tell the story. And if you can just look from 2017 to 2019, both in the circuit, superior courts, our numbers just go like this, straight up. I don't think that's, again, a failure of anything we're doing programmatically or law enforcement wise. In fact, we've probably been victimized to a degree by our own success, I think, in this county. But that being said, we've got a lot of young, aggressive police officers out there to their credit. We've got great relationships with all our police agencies, and those guys who downed through after working hard and working hard. So they're working hard, we're working hard. I'm asking you the tools to do the job effectively. I think it's a real need. I encourage you for any additional information or questions you can, I'd be happy to answer it anytime, either in this setting or another setting. I know Judge Fall in particular has expressed support for this because it directly impacts him as well. He needs to move cases efficiently, and sometimes we just don't have bodies helping. So that's where we stand. That's kind of our state of play. And I'd be happy to take any questions from you.
Counselor, you've made a very effective statement, which speaks to your level of success in the courtroom. The Supreme Court of Indiana has a regulation and a recommendation about everything. Are they at any point considering addressing this reality?
Not yet, no. I mean, I don't think they're, the Supreme Court and our legislature are, are, as Judge Fall and I discussed, wonderful at detailing these programs that they want us to take a veteran's court. An astounding program, a great success, and a better than Judge Fall's cap. But there was no assistance or funding, there was some limited grant funding for that. There's no, absolutely no legislative legislation or any mandate from the Supreme Court or any money either of those bodies that I see. This is all on purpose.
With this buildup in cases, how long is it going to be before either you or the judges are going to be wanting another court?
You know, that's a better question for them. I think, and I don't want to speak again for Judge Renshaw, but there's two different animals. I hadn't spoken about it, so I'm not going to speak again. I suspect, I think the interim staff is probably an additional part that I would full time magistrate to kind of take on some of the, just the routine things. I think that's probably the intermediate step. But I do see the population, I think we have 3% population increase over the last 10 years. You have a population increase to grow. I could see in the not too distant future, it becoming a real need. Because all of the things those, the judges do, I mean, you think about small claims, civil litigation, divorce, family, all that testing stuff, the DCS stuff. Yeah, it's, it's.
But your load didn't increase, and so does theirs.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're kind of all in this together.
So the Supreme Court, though, does have recommendations, expectations based on population and a number of cases of how many judges, magistrates still file.
Right. So yes, that, yes, they do. The judges have, there's no equivalent to prosecutors, but for judges, there is a weighted caseload. And I can tell you, probably both of our judges would take issues with the way the Supreme Court approaches their caseload. But yes, sir, there are. There's no, there's no similar model for prosecutors.
What would be our total cost with this request, with benefits and insurance?
My question to you is really quick. Would the $60,000 be what she does make, or would that be without any increase? Like, if they give any increases, you would add that to the 60, correct? How did you?
If I hear you correctly, yes. Yes.
Okay.
My other question is, do you have any referral programs that would assist us in finding out?
Typically, the short answer is potentially, I suppose. When the expense that I'm going to incur, and I think as I explained, this is probably a force, I may also be hiring a receptionist to be the first floor front of the prosecutor's office. And I can use federal incentive monies for that. Those are monies that are returned to us through our high performance in the child support collection area. So I can offset some costs, staffing costs there a little. As it relates to a deputy prosecutor, it is not traditionally been ruled of parole programs or pre-travelation programs to fund personnel. I spent, I do, I can look, but I think I spent approximately $70,000 last year on parole counsel, law enforcement training, equipment, for training for my staff, community education for my staff, all kinds of programmatic areas. And that's, that has typically been the direction from prosecuting attorneys' counsel that definitely likes to fund those. And I do, I do, I do have a commitment to do that. That's really, she, Deputy Spencer comes to me and needs a new camera, and it's a two or three or $4,000 item. It stays out of his budget and stays out of your office, your desk. And I can take care of that. And I do so traditionally, that is what I do.
The $60,000 salary, is that set for the same as your salary by the state, or is that a number that you came up with?
That's a number that we got came up on a quick basis, consistent, I think, with what first year lawyers would be making as deputy prosecutors in most counties. So that's probably an average starting salary, merit-based, length of service, those kinds of things. People are going to make, going to make more, but for a first year, first time, that's consistent with, I think, I checked funding to the abs.
Without digging through the numbers here, what's the salaries for the rest of your department as far as you and your deputy and the two people that are working there now?
So yeah, so my deputy and I are state paid. So it's. I asked them, because I don't know what is it. A starting salary for elected prosecutors, approximately 100. I've been around a long time, so I don't know.
What? Your third position?
Is the, is the 4D, that would be approximately. The chief deputy, I'm going to say the staff.
So she's working for you now?
Yes, sir.
And you want to move her to a prosecutor someday?
Yes.
The position she has now, will you want to refill that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. That position that she's in now, she's really been to a double duty. That position is extremely demanding. That, I called it the Superior Court Administrator. That's a non-lawyer, it's an administrative support. But that responsibility is for every case that moves through the Superior Court, whether it's a speeding ticket, or whether it's a big old 5,000 or something like that. So just in the context of that, you know, she's going to handle 1,200 criminal cases this year. That position is going to handle 1,200 criminal cases. It's since the Monday morning, the left that we seem to have recently reviewed 30, 25 or 30 cases. So I will absolutely be filling that.
And that's already in your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
What's, what's that position at right now?
John, to answer your question, if Jen decided, or whoever it is decided to take the family medical, it would be, because that would be the max we pay out with FICA, Medicare, PERF, everything, it would be about $90,000 or a little over. Because that's not including an increase for next year. But that wouldn't all come out of his budget because the PERF, the FICA, and the Medicare come out of commissioners.
Well, perfect.
Or proven a request of $60,000 for a salary next year, then we wouldn't be adding anything to it as far as whatever raise we decide anyway. It would be the $60,000, right? Is that what you're requesting?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you can't, you can't ask for $60,000 for a position next year, but then ask for the whatever raise we're going to give to everybody else for that also.
No doubt that your office is busier than it has been, what you're, we're used to over the years. In order to keep peace and quiet in the community, I think we need, I like what you presented. And I think we need to do something about it. We can't do it on our own. If you get behind, we just keep getting more criminals.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Procedurally, did we just address this when we're going to the salary process, or do you need an action at this point?
Do we need a motion?
It's up to you. You guys can do it now.
I know.
I mean, it would, it would technically be part of that salary process. I would entertain a motion. I think, I think it would be appropriate. I don't know that it's needed, but it would be appropriate.
I make a motion that we reinstate the position of the additional prosecuting deputy, prosecuting attorney at the salary of $60,000 plus benefits.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Before I call for a vote, I will say that my, my key concern is, as you hit it on, hit on previously, is we don't know the effects of COVID. So adding a position at this time concerns me. We've been told in the past that we don't, we don't know the true effect. We haven't felt it yet. We'll probably, most likely, we'll feel it next year. That being said, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and oppose the same. And that passes, that'll be added.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Moving on, the next item is salary increases.
Mr. Chairman, I brought research to the last meeting indicating that the estimates for the COLA are 1.3. I researched it again last night, and there were no new numbers. Those are not the actual federal government numbers. Those are the estimates of the people that do the research. And my feeling is that, given what we've been able to do last year, anything more than a COLA, given the unknowns of the future, would be problematic potentially.
Does it involve all positions?
Well, all positions, and I would exempt the council from any increase. Pardon?
Counsel and commissioners.
Yeah. The number I had just mentioned last month was 1.5 because the estimate's 1.3, but the research says could be 1.8, but I'm like.
And those numbers won't be released until next month, is that right?
October 15.
Anyone else?
I'll just say, I think it was a good move on our part last year to push forward equalization off our program that we paid to get job to square job schedules done. Because I think we'd been in a really tough position if we'd have not done it all last year. So I'm glad that we did that. I know it doesn't pertain to what we're doing today, but I'm just going to say it was, it was good to get it done. Big chunk last year. Because things are going to get tight, and I don't think we're going to see the true ramifications probably for the next 18 months.
I would, I would agree with Councilman Hodges. I mean, we, I think we did our part last year, bringing everybody up to the whisk where we needed to be. Some employees were underpaid. They got up where they needed to be on that this year, you know. If we vote on it, which we will, you know, 1% or none is where I'm thinking. I don't see any reason to go any higher than that. You know, we all, we're all using the COVID excuse, but I think we have to. I don't think we have any idea what's going to happen in 2022. So that's, that's where I stand on it right now.
We hired somebody to evaluate these jobs with outside jobs of the same paperwork, same skill set. And what we were trying to do is make us competitive with the general public. And I think we did. We spent the money to do it, and we ought to listen to what they said, which we did. But we gave that $1,200 increase. We screwed it up a little bit as far as deputies are concerned. We have to take, we may have to take a look at that separately, but we did mess it up a little bit. We, that should have been a bonus, not a pay increase, in my opinion.
I'm in favor of the 1% increase for 2021, with the exceptions of the council commissioners.
My concern about 1% is, means we get further behind
Yeah.
in keeping up with cost of living. In the whole, my understanding, the whole WIS process was to get people up to standard. If that's the will of the council, I would certainly support it. But I would argue for the 1.3.
I'm in agreement with Councilman Compher. Yeah, we'll recognize Senator First, Senator Barry.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
There were a few positions that are remissed to their classification. They are making above what the extramit point was. So my question is, is the cost of living of those positions or not?
My sense is that cost of living is for, across the board with, unless you make specific exceptions, which we're doing, so that they would still receive that. so that they would still receive that.
You know how many positions that was?
Excuse me.
How many?
16.
Okay.
I would not be in favor of exempting them from a 1.3 or a 1% COLA increase.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion just to move things forward.
Sure.
I would move that we budget in our salary ordinance for a 1.3% increase for employees of Whitney County, with the exception of the council and the commissioners, with the caveat that there are positions still on our agenda to be considered changes and adjustments.
I have a motion. And I have a second. Any further discussion?
What, yeah, I guess I would like explanation on what that motion means.
It means that the 1.3 is the estimated cost of living. There are still positions to be refactored, the elected officials. There are things here that we still haven't decided on that might affect the total package. And I think we need to discuss those before we just lump everybody in.
Well, I would say that, it's my understanding that we're here today for this meeting because we have to have that decided today.
Right.
So if that is, if that is indeed the case, then maybe we should put this on hold and address the other positions and come back to this.
That'd be acceptable.
Makes sense.
I'd be fine with that, but I do have a motion and a second on the floor.
I would throw my motion.
Throw. So we'll come back to that. And we'll move on to the auditor positions refactored.
Okay, so the reason why the auditor positions are factored, well, actually, we found out when Jen started, when she came into the position and started looking, my exemption deputy that's part-time was actually never factored. So we need to go ahead and send that through if we can get you guys' approval. And then I also was looking into my payroll assistant upstairs. She actually does, we have added to her job description file management. She does cover that in the afternoons when Mary is not here, so is staffed full-time. She, or the other girls in office help, but she is my primary person, and she's our go-to person if we have, if we need something in file management. So I would just kind of wanted to look at those two, see what you guys thought, and see if we need to have a personnel committee meeting, if we need to send it to WIS. Just your thoughts on that. And Jen, if you need to want to add anything?
I thought of them refactoring had to come to the Personnel Committee first before it even come.
That's what I was wondering, who calls, who calls for the refactored policy?
Why are we waiting now?
Well, I wanted to pull the personnel committee, try to ask the, I would type up all of the issues and then bring this to you today. You guys decide, I guess I need more correction on you guys decide whether or not we need to be personnel or decide.
So Jennifer and I had had a discussion on whether or not there would be a need for a Personnel Committee meeting. And I felt that since all of council was meeting today, we could decide as a whole body, all of council, whether or not this did need to in fact go to a Personnel Committee meeting, in which case we could stay after and hold a Personnel Committee meeting and then address these in our October meeting. So not to, not to skip the process or, or the system or, or whatever we have in place, but you know, just trying to get ahead of it and, and make best use of our time.
Well, the only concerns I got is if we require an agreement to send it on, then we can't make a motion. I can't see how we can make a motion on the, on going forward as far as the increase in wages or, until we get that back.
Well, this one, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you will, Jan, doesn't have, have anything to do with the budget because it's not an elected official salary. It would be an employee's salary, so it could be refactored and changed at any time during the process. It would just have to be, funds would just have to be allocated for it. So I would think, it would be my recommendation for what Jan is asking for here, that we go ahead and schedule that maybe in the near future for a Personnel Committee meeting and look over that and then have it moved forward because we could still do it outside of the parameters of the budget cycle.
Personally, I'd be more comfortable with that going before the Personnel Committee and then following their recommendations.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think we just wanted to bring it to your attention, the issues, so you guys got the heads up and why the Personnel Committee meeting would potentially be happening. So just wanted to get, give you guys a heads up.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. That would be my, Mr. Chairman, that would be my wish.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we could do that by consensus without an actual vote, just for, for personnel committee.
Yep, that sounds great.
That's, you should be, follow the refact.
Yep, that'll work. So we'll address then the Superior Court position, refactoring and the clerk position refactoring as well.
Yeah, anything that needs to be factored, should be done.
Is there any difference in the, the Superior Court position? Would fit into that, but is there any difference between the clerk position refactored? Or not? What's, let's, I guess I'd like to hear from the clerk, because if, if they're asking for the clerk, the elected official's position to be refactored, then that is different than what, it's not that?
It'd be a deputy.
Okay, then.
One of your deputies, that position on here was your traffic deputy, correct? It was her traffic deputy, that means.
Yeah, that would probably fit in also.
Okay, let's move on to longevity pay.
Longevity pay was primarily within there, there are a couple of things. One of them, we, budget time, we used to only here, building some down the hall, making more money than I do, and I've been here longer. And that was to try and cure that, and also keep employees, keep people on the job. But it wasn't in that journal. I'm not, I don't see any reason for change.
I guess I'm not sure what the issue is with longevity pay. If somebody could explain that, and that would be great. Yeah, I don't know what we're talking about.
Well, basically, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I am reading through the report that was put together in May of 2019. They made a recommendation to you to, to consider increasing longevity pay. So I was just simply bringing that to your attention to review. They, they felt like it may need to be increased.
And you had shared an email with us as well recently with some examples of longevity pay from some, some other counties. Is that correct?
Correct. And I don't know, Tim, I thought I saw you maybe had the updated version of that, 2020. I had 2019 where it just compared, it compared like counties as far as population and what those different counties.
I'll bring it to you because you'll be able to find it faster.
I hope so.
The counties that were included in that email had population that was similar, counties that were similar in size.
Yeah, the book that I just handed Jennifer breaks it down by size. And she's looking at the ones just larger than us and our size. So it's counties within 40, 30 and 40,000 is the representative page that she sent us. Just the census did its job. We would bump up to 35, 40.
I did find 2020, but I don't know if you want me to make copies or, it does all look like there's a whole lot that has changed. And there's not much to compare because several of those counties don't offer longevity.
So it's my understanding that we're talking, we're discussing this today because WIS made a recommendation that we increase our longevity.
Correct. And again, I don't know if that's something that's more appropriate for the Personnel Committee to first review, or if you wanted me to bring it to council. So I just simply made a list of things that I thought needed attention.
Why don't we add that to the Personnel Committee?
Just as a general thought, it seems like a good idea, but I'm not sure that we can do it at this point in time until we clear 21 and potentially 22. It's not a large amount of money, but it's still. We're going to do some other things. We need to be conservative. Just an opinion.
I appreciate your opinion.
I don't see need to change.
I know, not every employee, employer gives longevity pay, so I think they're pretty fortunate where they're at. With me, I agree, we stay where we're at.
Yeah, from looking at the attachment from Jennifer and from hearing what you had to say on this page, it's sort of rare even in counties our size. You know, there's many, many counties that don't offer longevity pay. So I think it's a great perk, something that we can certainly continue our discussion on. I'm a fan of following recommendations from WIS, from a service that we contracted with, disinterested third party. I think it's something that we continue the discussion, maybe do more research on, but I'm not sure we're in a position that we can change this right now. Anything else on longevity pay?
Would you guys like the printout on the WIS report or no? Like what it said, do you guys, do you guys want me to email it to you?
Yeah, as a, as a reminder to everyone, you can certainly send it to us. Anything else on longevity pay? Let's move on to elected officials and chief deputies pay. Is, is someone here?
I can speak on that as well. Again, I just wanted to bring to your attention just something that I believe needs attention, and that is, I just after, prior to 2019 or 2018, when WIS did their evaluation. You know, we have, most offices are set up where they have a department head. And then they have a person that I called second in command, for lack of a better word, or administrative assistant. That's, most of our offices are set up that way. And prior to 2018 or 2019, those administrative assistants, or whatever their title was or is, we, they were all making comparable wages, as well as department heads. And then afterwards, you know, when, with the elected officials not receiving any increase, currently there may, you know, be an internal disparity between those positions, to where you have someone down the hall that's essentially doing a similar position, administrative assistant position, that's making significantly more than your chief deputy, who is also doing administrative assistant work. And same as with your elected officials, I know they can't be classified. I, I understand that and I respect that. But at the same time, they are serving essentially as department heads. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there is a disparity there and in inequality there as far as pay. And I, we just proposed a few different options, just as starting points of discussion, ways that you could possibly address that. So that's, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
On this handout you gave us, Government Center, and you got two proposals. Where do the proposals come from?
Sure. The first proposal is, comes from me, just an idea. Looking at the different departments and the department heads and what their salaries are, all of them, with the exception of the elected officials, are at, at at least a PAT 2 level. Some are at PAT 1. So that figure comes from where the PAT 2 is, the base pay for PAT 2 is that figure there. So that would be bringing elected officials up to that, that same, even though they're not going to be categorized as a PAT 2, they would receive the equivalent income. So I came up with that. And then for their chief deputies, just 85% of that. The second proposal came from the auditor's office, and they kind of did it in reverse. They started with the chief deputies and brought them to, I believe, a PAT 3 level. And then, correct, but they did a more tiered approach to where not each elected official was making the exact same. They did it based off of number of people in your office that you're supervising, responsibilities, that type of thing, to where a couple, that's why you see a difference in, in income there.
And the state has nothing to do with setting the elected official's salary? None whatsoever?
We're going to solve this dilemma by having an outside company do that for us. We're straight a long ways away from that.
Well, actually, we didn't. We went by their recommendations. And that was last year.
Last year we did. Now we're talking, are we still following what they advised? These don't match up with that, I don't think.
There were no recommendations for elected officials.
No, but what we had settled, they did, they kind of came up with an average of counties our relative size.
And my, my only comment to that, I guess, is that they didn't really, I mean, I think where they fell short there was that they didn't really see the uniqueness of Whitley County and how we operate here. You know, I think they, they gave great guidance and gave great recommendations that we should go off of, but they were also lacking in certain areas. And I think one, one of those areas is knowing the uniqueness of this county and how we operate and how we have operated traditionally.
So expand on that. What's that mean? What's our uniqueness that would factor in, that would alter what their recommendations were?
Again, we have department heads that are, are elected officials that serve as department heads. They're here just as much, sometimes more, you know, as department heads. I mean, all of our department heads are highly qualified and great people, you know. We don't have anybody that's coming in, you know, an hour a week or an hour a day. That's one example. Again, we just, all of our offices are kind of set up where we have a department head that's in charge, and then someone else that's kind of second in command, administrative assistant, that's, that can take over when that person is gone. Or in the case of elected officials, they need to be prepared to take over at any moment if something happened to that person. So I think that is some of the examples of how we are unique. And they, I, I think that's how, where they were lacking in that.
We just kind of assume that whoever the elected official is, is the department head. Their chief deputy is second in command. We don't slip anything else. That, that's the way I always it's to be anyway.
My observation is that there are counties where that in fact does not happen. Marshall County, for example. The auditor doesn't supervise state to day operations. There are people that make the, do the 20 hour a day. And you can't say that that is a department head functioning the way that we talk about department heads. I've been quite concerned and actually had discussions with some of the elected officials about the potential disparity if someone would be elected who didn't have the qualifications to run the particular office. And is it appropriate for them to just automatically get whatever pay someone with eight or 16 years experience gets? And how to figure all of this process out? And kind of the piece that came to my mind was that there is an elected official with a salary. Every department needs a de facto apartment, department head. And if at some point the elected official is not doing that, I would say, in fact, if we have an elected official ever that is a figurehead instead of a full-time working official heading their department, we need to be able to address that at some point. That's not the case now. That's not the culture. And I think that's part of what Jennifer was referring to when she talked about the uniqueness. Is that the culture here has been, you will be a working elected official and you will run your department. Where that's not the requirement of the law and in a lot of counties, at least one county that I know specifically that we were compared to, it's not the case. So I think that's where the concern comes from.
My opinion, without seeing statistics and going through and gathering all the information from all the counties that we were compared to and that the analysis was done from would be that Marshall County would be the uniqueness and rather than what Woodley County does. Maybe I'm totally off on that, but I would think that that would be more of the standard than being unique to that particular line of, of how our government is ran. I would love to see that though. I mean, if anybody's done the research on that to show us that most, most elected officials in Indiana don't run their departments. I'd love to see that. That would certainly change my mind.
I don't mean that I implied most.
Well, I, no, my opinion is that your example would be the unique part. I think, I would, I would guess. I guess that's my perception.
This is my anecdotal experience.
Any further discussion on elected officials and chief deputies pay?
Just that any increase that we would consider. I don't necessarily think that there needs to be the same pay amount for each of the elected positions. Because there are different people in employee, different number of employees, there are different certifications that are necessary and training if you're going to be a full-time leader of that particular job. So if we would do a, an increase for elected officials, I would suggest that we set on a dollar amount and apply that to each of the elected officials, even just the 85% to that factor. Rather than, and across the board.
So just so I'm understanding correctly, you would say that let's, let's set a salary for the clerk and then let's set a salary for the auditor, the treasurer, the recorder, and they may not be all the same, but assign a dollar.
I, what I'm suggesting is that we take the existing salary and add the same dollar amount to each one so that there would still be potential differences within the five. That there be a dollar amount added as opposed to bringing them all to the same. You know, an $8,000 increase just does not seem appropriate. So if we did, and that's what a couple of them would be under one of the proposals. So, you know, just my thoughts. $2,844.
And my argument would be that this is going right back to what we did and paid for last year and what we moved forward with and, and I think we're rehashing something with less information than what we had last year.
I would agree with that, Tim.
It took the least expensive proposal, proposal one, and deducted the salary of the highest paid of the current highest paid elected officials, we said by intended to do. And subtracted the difference from what the proposal would be minus the current salary.
Oh, yeah, which one is?
That would be the auditor is currently, if I read this right, the elected officials.
It's on what I typed up.
Yes, I'm sorry, on this sheet.
The spreadsheet.
Not sure if I have that.
It came in the email.
Are these mine or yours?
Those were sitting there when I came in. I think it's from some of your meetings.
Oh.
The auditor's current salary is $55,930. Proposal one was $58,774. And then, I'm not going to guarantee my math is correct. The difference there is 2,844.
Then you'd be there forever, every office.
For those five offices, yes. Would not respond that way in part-time. Surveyor, et cetera.
Yeah.
We would keep them where they are because they're, don't serve the responsibility of a department in addition to their elected responsibilities.
Put the 1.3 on top of that or?
No. That's why I wanted to not oppress that at this point.
And you, what was 2,000, how much, what was it for that increase?
2,844. Again, if my math is correct, that's $17,064 added to the budget.
And you're excluding them from the 1.3?
Yes.
So Jennifer, what Councilman Hodges asked you, you're going to look up the paper, the copy you made me of the, the counties from 35,000, 40,000. You're going to check with some of them to see how their elected officials operate, if they're also classified as department heads and what their salaries are.
Sure, I can do that.
Is that what, is that what you were looking for, Councilman Hodges?
Well, that's going to be relevant information once we pass through today because it's going to have to be set and voted on in our next council meeting. So that's not probably possible to gather that information. And that's what makes me uncomfortable with the fact that essentially today's an 11th hour meeting to set salaries for next year. And we talked about cost of living is the only thing that we have talked about up to this point. And then we arrive at the meeting today without an updated agenda, even walking in here today, without updated materials that I've been handed twice since we've been sitting here. All discussing a matter that we already discussed and vetted and went with recommendations last year. And we're looking at going into them and making that consideration now in the 11th hour based on information of just factoring a couple of things and taking an average. And I'm very uncomfortable with that. And I think that we did our due diligence last year when we went through this matter. And I think that issue was resolved then. And here we are again. That's we've had plenty of time to make these recommendations and to have discussions and to do research into this before today's meeting, just like Jennifer alluded to. And, and, and here we are. So I'm very uncomfortable.
It just, and, and just to add to that, it just doesn't feel very methodical. It doesn't like, we're just, we're just coming up with a number and saying, well, let's just add this number to everyone and exclude them from any other percent increase. And I, I just don't, I don't understand the process where we can arrive at this number and then start tacking it on to these positions.
Oh, that's what we always did when we decided to hire a firm to do it for us.
Say that one more time, please.
That's the way we have always done it. Till we decided we couldn't handle it, we hired a firm to do it for us. Now, we, was that a waste of money or are we going to listen to what they said?
But, but what we're talking about now is the five elected officials, which they did not factor in, correct? That's what our discussion is right now. And they were not factored through WIS.
No, so.
They just gave a summary statement.
That's really 10 because you have the chief deputies as well that were not factored.
Okay.
Um, one, one moment, please. Gina had asked.
Yeah, I just, and I just wanted to clear up a couple of things. I did want to make sure you guys did get this ahead of time. I just didn't have time to send you out council packets, but you did all get it in email, I believe, on Thursday or Friday. So you have had this information. It's not like you got it all today. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that, you know, you didn't just get it all today. It was on your email. And then I also, the only thing I, I don't think, I wanted to comment on pulling a number out of thin air. We're not pulling a number out of thin air. We are taking what Tim is saying, the proposal one, that is a PAT2, a PAT2 salary and can, and you know, putting elected officials an internal equitable pay within the county. So it's not, I, I wouldn't say it's pulling a number out of thin air. I'm saying we're trying to get us in align with other department heads because that's what we are. That would be my only comment. So.
So you're not saying you want to be treated as a PAT2. You're saying that's the number that you're basing that on because of the responsibility as a department head.
So I'm, yeah, so that's why I'm saying we're not, I wouldn't say we're pulling, there's nothing to compare us to, nothing. So what, what do you do besides use the WIS report that was provided to us for the internal equitable pay? That's all I mean.
Yes.
Tim Erdlich, yep.
You know, recognize last year, you received what you received from the other counties that was provided in that report. And we did. We went through every bit of this last year. But our precedence was set when that external midpoint was approved by what was approved by some non-department head in that PAT2 position. They are not a department head. They're not equivalent to the government head. They're not equivalent to responsibilities for an elected official. And that, those positions are now making more with that approval last year than these five elected officials saying. Along with the fact of the administrative position in those offices, non-elected offices that are comparable to your chief deputies. That's why this is being brought back to you again this year. It is not about what is happening in Marshall County or Huntington or anywhere else. It's about what's happening here within our own kind of government system and the comparative salaries that we are under or positions that are not even a department head. They have a department head above them. That, that is what we brought to you and your HR director has brought to you that that is part of the pay inequity. I just, I wanted to, I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Your office is a little harder to compound. If we get a new assessor, the requirement is, well, I guess you have to get those added responsibilities. And then we're required to pay another $2,400 a year of over salary, if I got that correct.
I'm sorry, no, would you ask?
Well, when you achieve a certain level, which you have to take schooling for, then you, we are required to pay you another $2,500 a year on top of your salary.
That's in the statute, yes.
So if we, what happens if we get a, an assessor who does not have that or doesn't do it?
Or you can stay, oh, they have to have that certification.
But not at the point of election.
It's been changed two or three times.
Okay.
Prior to 2018, I believe, and 2014, they haven't had a level three. Then they switched it back because there were a couple of people who were trying to run for assessor who could not pass their level three. So then they went back to only having to have a level two with the requirement because you have to have that level three within after you, you take off.
Mr. Chairman, just to get us off the dime, would you entertain a motion?
I would.
If we can vote up or down.
Yeah.
I would make a motion that the five elected officials who work full-time, serving in addition to their legal responsibilities as department chairs, that we increase their pay $2,844.
Can you say your number one more time?
My, and it would not be a cost of living to that. Five elected officials who, in addition to their statutory responsibilities, function as department heads.
And what is that, what is that dollar amount?
2,844.
A little problem with an elected official not being department head. They're all of them responsible for that job, period.
But I'm a worst-case scenario kind of guy. And I could see someone getting elected who would not effectively lead the department and that would fall to the chief deputy.
Yeah.
So that's why it's a concern to me and I've.
And that's why you would include that they are full-time serving as department heads in your
Yes.
motion. So then what recourse do you have if, after an election year, you got someone who does not?
We're going to have to deal with that salary that year. And after that, technically, we could reduce it. One potential change would be to pay a salary and then pay a department head adjustment. So reduce the salary, but there'd be an additional amount for running the department. And if the person doesn't do that effectively, we could take that out of their pay. But that's too complicated for now.
Yeah, I don't know how you'd even prove that. How would you try that?
Be true in that.
You know, there, we'd have to create a process, which I think could be fairly simple over the course of a year or two.
But if you had a chief deputy working for an elected official who was being pressured not to report anything, I mean, I, I just don't know how you do that.
You can come up with a, a matrix of expectation for anything. Wouldn't be an easy process.
Yeah.
How you determine that that department head is not, you know, department head is not doing her job?
Yeah, go ahead, Gina. Yeah, go ahead, Gina.
The only thing that I could say about that is, I think we could all probably speak to this, is we would all notice it. We would all notice that the person was not here, not doing their job. You guys would find out one way or another. That's my honest opinion. You know, and I think we all take pride in being here full-time, all the time, taking care of our departments and taking care of this county. And if someone's not doing it, just like a few years ago in the past, there was a chief deputy and the assessor, I'm sorry, an elected official in the assessor's office that was only here six months ago. And the Republican Party, I would essentially say pushed her out because she wasn't here doing her due diligence and what that department is, you know, here to do. So I would say, yes, there are ways to know that an elected official is not fulfilling their duties that they were sworn in to do.
I've had an elected official several years ago that was stealing from the county for three years that we never discovered. It was through an audit, wasn't it, that it was finally discovered through the state?
It was not. It was something that a few people in our office found.
It still went on for a while. And that's, I'm not saying that it's not negative towards you and didn't bring up your office, but I mean, it.
Absolutely. And it was paid back and she was bonded. So that's why we're all bonded. Because if something, unfortunately, an event like that happens, the county can get paid back for it. That can happen with any employee. It's not just elected officials. Right.
Cindy.
State Department of Council has really put more checks and balances in our office. So we have internal controls. I don't do everything because we double check each other's work. So I just want you to know, State Department of Council have really increased their auditing process. So as far as finding if somebody would be stealing money, I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Do you have any proposal on the table now? I'm going to second that proposal so that we can go ahead with the vote.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second. We've had a lot of discussion in the meantime after the motion. So just recapping, that motion would be that the five elected officials who are serving full-time as department heads would receive an increase of $2,844. That correct, Tim? So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And that, that motion also included the no 1.3% cost of living increase.
I still have a problem with an elected official not being necessarily department head.
Well, you can be a department head that's a figurehead and not functioning. And there are lots of ways to begin to handle that. Personnel issues, personnel management, missed deadlines. We could, over a course of time, I believe we could come up with a criteria to determine whether or not the elected official was actually functioning as the head of the department and adjust their salary accordingly in the future.
Who's gonna determine that?
Personnel committee and then the council, based on salary control. But that's not what's at issue today. That's something to be built and proposed at another time.
Tim, can you just walk me through one more time how you arrived at the $2,844?
The auditor's current salary of $55,930, that's the base salary, correct? Is that your base salary? Oh, I'm sorry. Auditor, yes. And then I took proposal number one, which is the less expensive of the two, subtracted the current salary from the proposed salary for the auditor. And if my math is correct, that's 2,844. And rather than bringing everyone to an equal amount, give them each an equal increase.
Can I ask why you selected the auditor pay rather than assessor, treasurer?
Just because the auditor is the highest.
So if this motion does pass, that he, that council will come through suggesting, does that change any of the 85% on the chief deputy stuff we've got to worry about?
Yeah. It also will affect the sheriff. So whatever raise that we give, whatever's the highest percentage raise to any one of these individuals, the sheriff will also get that same raise. So we need to factor that in.
So it is highest percentage and not actual dollar.
I believe it says percentage.
Okay. Wasn't privy to the contract writing, so.
So then we'd have to have a motion for the chief deputies to adjust all their pay then, too?
And if we did that, I would say to bring them to 85%, unless they are already over the 85%. And if they're not over the 85%, they're the one group that.
And remind me again, who came up with the 85%?
That was the recommendation from Wagner Irwin and Shealy. So I have a motion and a second. I'm gonna call for a vote. Moving along, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. And opposed, the same. Did you get that?
It was John.
No. I will say, I'm not opposed to doing something. I think the timing is right. I'm, I'm concerned about the, the method. I'm concerned about how we arrived at the number. I'm concerned about, you know, the, the effect of the elected officials or the, I'm sorry, the chief deputies giving 85%.
So if the chair were presented with that information in the process of how that was arrived at, would you entertain this again at our next meeting?
I would. Like I said, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to doing something for the elected officials, something different. And I do recognize and understand and even appreciate that during that Wagner Irwin and Shealy process, the elected officials were not treated the same as employees and during that, through that process. Any further discussion on that, elected officials and chief deputies pay? Let's move on to hire and pay. Is that you again?
Yes. And again, I don't, this may be more appropriate for personnel committee, but, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that it's not anything that's beneficially approved, but it's always just been tradition that we have a base salary. But anytime, with the exception of deputies and other positions like that. But anytime we hire anyone in, it's kind of up to the department head, they can hire them in at 90%, anywhere from 90% of that base salary to 100% of that base salary. And I just would be more comfortable if it was something that was officially approved and everybody understood what the process was. I know Ed's idea was that everybody started at 90% and then at six months, they went to 95% and then in a year, they went to full base pay. But, you know, again, nothing was ever officially approved. There was a lot of confusion with that. So again, I don't know if this is something that's more appropriate for personnel committee and then we present it to council. But I just would be more comfortable if there was something that was more concrete and officially approved, whether you want to do the 90% or whether we just hire everybody in at their base salary.
Does council feel comfortable with personnel committee discussing this and coming back with recommendation?
Yeah.
Yes. Maintaining the job classification system, is that you again?
Yes. So in, in the email that I sent to you, I pretty much just copied exactly what WIS recommended. And there were three recommendations there. They recommended first that once a year before budget, which we're kind of late now, but that we do a wage and salary analysis to be able to, to present and give you, you know, better information for you to be able to do this process. So I just would like clarification again on who is to do that, how we want to do that. And again, we can discuss that personnel committee if that's more appropriate. But second recommendation was that council assess the role of the personnel committee, review who is on that and how often they're gonna meet. So, you know, again, I was just offering that and so that we could discuss that and come up with a plan. And then the last recommendation was that a subcommittee of council members be appointed for a job classification and compensation committee. So I, that confused me a little bit, whether we need to have two committees, a personnel committee and job classification committee. Again, just would like some guidance on how you want to proceed because it's not real clear, you know, when I get a request to have something changed in a job description or just what the process is, I think that needs to be more clearly defined. And I think it would benefit everybody, including yourselves. So again, if we want to discuss that in personnel and come up with kind of a plan, I'd be open to that.
Yep, that sounds great to me.
I would suggest that Jennifer do some research of other options and how other people do it and that this can be the bottom of the agenda. We deal with, personnel committee deal with all the other issues first. Because we don't have to do this before the end of the budget cycle, just as a suggestion.
All right, let's move back to the salary increase discussion. This is something that we need to make a decision on.
I, if secretary can read the motion, I would move it again. The opportunity to amend.
You made the motion for 1.3% increase with the exception of the commissioners and council. John seconded it and then you withdrew it. So that was the motion.
No, you two men, I would make that motion.
Repeat it so I can hear you. Can you?
So the motion, Bill, was that we would give a cost of living increase of 1.3%. We would exclude the council as well as commissioners.
A question, why would you exclude the commissioners? I think they're paid anyways.
I would agree with you on that.
I agree with that also.
It just seemed appropriate to me, given the budget situation and the across-the-board $1,200 last year. I know that that was a huge percentage increase for us and not as much as for the commissioners. Just recognizing that we have budget restraints, but I would accept an amendment and change that and support it if someone wanted to do so.
Then we include the commissioner.
Okay, we, we do have a motion. Tim, right now, there's not, not a second. So you can amend.
Yeah, I'd rather somebody else do that, stand right here. So if we get a second or don't.
All right.
Tim, does that include the elected officials?
In this case, it would. Well, we haven't determined yet their salary, have we? That's the question that we have not resolved. Well, then I would amend it to, if in fact there are no other increases for elected officials, they would also receive the 1.3% if there are no other increases. And we might as well just keep amending and add the commissioners back in at this point, since we don't have a second.
All right, so that's a lot going on there. Do you feel, yes?
So 1.3% increase for all employees excluding the council. And then if there are no other increases for elected officials, they would also receive the 1.3% increase.
Elected officials and their deputies. Well, that might not necessarily be accurate because there could be a deputy that would not qualify for a change. Well, because isn't there some disparity on where those, all those positions are at? So the 1.3% might actually be higher than what an 85% difference change would be potentially.
And I would say the chips fall where they may to get back in line with the system. And if someone is not, if someone is already above the 85%, they would remain flat.
With the 1.3?
Yes. They would not receive the 1.3. Yes.
Okay, so when you do a percentage, it actually works out, the $1,200 flat, flat dollar increase is what threw it off. So that's what we had put in and requested we be adjusted because they were making 90% instead of the 85, that we were adjusted to that and then received whatever cost of living increase you gave. That was our, I think, and Kim put that in there, I think, as well. And Rosemary also put that. And I think Laurel and I.
So they would all be staying where they were at, essentially. So they would, so you'd want to give them the 1.3%, but then that would skew it again.
If they get the 1.3, we would also get the 1.3.
But his motion is to exclude that.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Let's hear the motion again.
Okay, so a 1%, 1.3% increase excluding council. And then if no other increases were given for elected officials, they would also receive the 1.3% increase.
The chief deputies would be adjusted to the 85% unless they already make more than 85%. And if that is the case, they would remain flat.
I have a motion and a second. I have a question for HR, how does that sit with you?
Because if you don't, then you're gonna be chasing your tail and having to go back and give the, the elected officials another raise because they won't be above the eight or they won't, the 85% relationship won't be there.
This is another case where we're comparing apples and oranges. And to get to where we said we wanted to be, someone's gonna pay a cost by not getting an increase. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, chairman asked.
Yeah, go ahead.
And if you give the 1.3% to the chief deputy and then just make the elected officials 15% higher than that, so then they're always at 86%. We already have, yeah.
But what we're talking about right now is not that because that decision still has to be made. It's just the back side of whatever decision may or may not be made and how that's going to play out as far as what we decide here right now. So it's.
You'd be saying the elected official gets the 1.3%. Why don't you just do the, or the chief deputies instead? So then you always have that 15% gap in between. Because if you give it to the chief deputies, then the elected officials always go up to 85%.
Then we're kind of going backwards because that rule wasn't necessarily put in place to get the elected official salaries higher. It was meant to make sure that the deputies are paid a certain amount of their wages to make sure that they can keep up on the responsibilities of that office and carry out those duties if they need to also. So you're kind of turning things around as far as how the final wages are determined.
But if you did it for at least one year just to make that gap, even with everyone, then you could change it back. Because like right now, we're not 85%. Some of them are above that and some of them aren't.
Right. And if we got to that certain point, then we would never, ever again talk about chief deputy salaries. We wouldn't even ever consider them. They would just get whatever 85% was. So, and so if we could ever get to that point somehow, and maybe this is the time to do it, that would be how that should be addressed. But right now, I don't know that with what we're talking about here, before we make the final decision on what we're doing with the other salaries, that we can do that or that we can put the right verbiage in place to cover that, unless I'm just missing something.
So let's talk about the verbiage of the motion. What if we withdraw the portion about elected officials? And make a statement that elected officials and chief deputies are not addressed in this motion? So all employees with the exception that elected officials and chief deputies are not addressed.
Unless.
Unless.
We don't change anything.
Unless we don't change it. Yes.
And then they would all get the.
Yeah. We just kind of leave ourselves in the same, off of the 85%.
Go ahead and say it, say it out loud.
Okay. So 1.3% increase for all employees excluding council. And this does right now not include elected officials or chief deputies.
Unless elected officials and chief deputy salaries are not addressed by further action. Got what you intended?
Well, they will be addressed by further action. It might be positive, it might be negative, and it depends on who's looking at it. So it's going to be addressed. It's just a matter of whether it's changed or not.
Yeah. Okay, changed. Changed is a better word than addressed.
All right. So we're gonna, we're gonna consider that amendment. Do you accept the amendment in your second? Is there any further discussion? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. And opposed, the same, and that motion passes. So.
It's workshop.
Is there anything else, Jana, that needs to be addressed in this public meeting?
I just, again, we met today, so I could have numbers ready for you to be adopted at your meeting, correct?
Right.
So you know, how do you want me to address that?
We have, we still have the five elected officials and the chief deputies that can't be prepared by October's meeting unless we make a decision now. Is that correct?
Yeah, for, for adopting the budget. That would be my only question.
Can you prepare the rest of the budget? And we hash that out and then the chief deputy goes and adds the numbers in during the meeting or not? Is that just not a good procedural way to do it?
Anything's possible. I learned that last year. So.
Good way to do it, just say so.
I mean, I think at this point, it's like, you know, we, we've, we've dealt with this for a year now. Let's just get it over with. And to add to what you guys, when I gave some of your handouts, did you see the email from our DLGF app that said the lit values listed on the report are most likely going to be the same value you get November 1st, which will be the actual numbers that we will be receiving, the certified, not the estimated any longer. As you can see, their first estimate was the 3.9 million. There was the 3.9 million that they gave. It was actually going to be less than what we received this year for 2020. They, and then they, for 2020, received the 4.3 million for lit for county gen. Now they're saying actually for 2021, which he said will probably be our final numbers, will actually be more than this year, which is 4.6 million. So it's actually significantly more than what they had estimated in what we're receiving for this year. So that bumped up our revenue. So with, as you can see, the advertised and adopted amounts on that printout from the, from Gateway. A little bit of difference in our levies, which I gave you guys as well a couple of meetings ago. And then advertised was a 3% increase, adopted amount was a 1%. So as you can see, 1.3 is somewhere in there. That would be our cash balance estimates left at the end of 2021 minus our obligations. So, and then you had asked for that number at the last meeting. I had sent you that in an email and I think it was about 3.9 million that we would have left at the end of this year once all of our appropriations would be spent. And that's saying if we spent every amount of our appropriations in county general.
And if nothing else come up that we had used county general for.
But yeah, that would be the number that you asked.
I got that. I didn't see the other. And it may be there.
The other one, this one?
Yeah. And it may be there.
It was in your email that I sent.
All right. So my question for council is then how would we like to move forward with addressing the elected officials and chief deputies pay? Knowing that Jana has a deadline to prepare a budget that we can vote on in our October meeting. I understand that our last vote that we just took for the 1.3 would include those elected officials and chief deputies, assuming we do nothing further. So what action do, do we want to take as council?
I hate the idea of an additional meeting, but do we even have time to publish a meeting?
What's the deadline? I mean, if we, if we make the decision, yes, a lot of, a lot of work on you to make changes, but what's your deadline once we have our meeting on the, on, was it the third, the fourth? What's your deadline then to submit the budget?
I believe I have, I have three days to get that, all you guys signed and uploaded into Gateway.
Three days after it passes or? So we don't? So do we have to pass it at our next meeting?
Yeah.
That is the way I advertised it. So yes.
What if the Personnel Committee meet between now and then with Jennifer and bring a recommendation?
I'm sorry.
Must the Personnel Committee and Jennifer meet and bring a recommendation to the council? And it could put in the budget, assuming that we would follow the recommendation Personnel Committee.
I'd like for a meetmaker recommendation, but I wouldn't want to say at this point that we're going to accept it.
Councilman over here. Councilman Comfort.
I would just like to commend Jennifer for the seriousness she's taking as HR director and looking at things that haven't been addressed for some time.
So, well done. Councilman Warner.
Nothing.
Councilman Hodges. Councilman Wheeler.
I have nothing to add.
I'll, what about the, the public? Anything to add from the audience today? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the meeting.